What do you think we dispatched today?
Miles driving on that. It had, it had rain, rain, rain. And out of here, y'all, which used to be.
Can someone answer?
They used to have the Tennessee dispatch. I had told Harry the day before I was cast. You need to have some other checking around tomorrow. He's bloodsucking. That's like a. I'm not going down stairs and see whatever.
We're missing somebody. We are.
I got to have one.
Kwan, we're missing two. Let's give it another minute. That was an add-on, wasn't it? Because it's not, it's not in the agenda.
It wasn't. I told you. He sent somebody out there to see. And they took a picture of it.
I'm sorry, Kwan. But I'm. Or Brian.
It, I mean, I brought up.
Because it runs down.
Okay, well.
Three roads. So runs down. And beats in.
She's doing, she's got to go back.
Sounds like an ass this week.
That's exactly what it was. Hello, Kwan. Now, uh, you.
Okay, folks, I've got five thirty-one, so we will hope that Brian makes it here. But I'm gonna go ahead and. There it is. I was about to gavel down, so your time is impeccable.
Normally, it's.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call today's meeting to order. We are assembled here today for the Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. Today is February seventh, twenty twenty-two, and it is five thirty-two P M. And we are assembled here in the Commissioners Boardroom of City Hall. If you have a cellphone or other electronics device, please mute it or turn it off at this time. And we will proceed to set the agenda for the next week's meeting, which is going to be February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And so with that, turn to your agenda. So we are having our regular order. Brian Khan will lead our Pledge of Allegiance. And at this time, we have no public hearings scheduled. We do have in the delegation that we will recognize Chief Cottrell of the Fire Department as the Morgan Ren Employee of the Month. And Cindy, I would ask, is it possible to get me a little bit of the nomination information in a paragraph so I can have that to refer to? That would be. It's always nice to know what was put in it to nominate somebody. Thank you. And then for item five, we have considered calling for a public hearing to hear citizen input on a request from Graham County A B C Board for a text amendment from section two point four point three, which is the permitted use table of the U D O to allow A B C stores in the Central Business District as a permitted use with standards. And does anybody have, so currently right now, the applicant is the one that's requesting the text amendment to provide, in addition to the, to provide in addition to the existing building, and they are asking for some stringent standards that align with the development of the Central Business District. And so you have support information in section five A. Does anybody have any questions on this item at this time? And I would ask our Planning Director Hart with respect to the requests. And let me turn to that section. So they are asking for a requirement to, that we, that one, that we require that an A B C store be located on two public, through different public streets, and that we require twelve onsite parking spaces. And what is the purpose?
It almost prohibits doing one day up to.
Right. Do we want to do that?
I think so. I mean, the typical mall that I put establishment on the downtown. I mean, and what we did as U D O, of course, we weren't trying to expose them up. And we don't want to prohibit them for, for improvement themselves, never doing more. Our downtown spaces for that.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, in the sense that I, I was, when there's been a lot of discussion about, I mean, I was a little bit surprised by the requiring the twelve parking spaces because that wasn't clear in the planning meeting, that it was they that are suggesting that they have to add twelve additional parking spaces to the existing twelve parking spaces, and that with development in the downtown, requiring onsite parking, to me, doesn't seem like something that we automatically want to do. We're not requiring onsite parking for upper story residential.
But I think that's a little different from general onsite buildings rather than the forum base where you have the buildings right there together. And this is new, almost like new construction that add on with the lot they have. So that is something that they propose to add, so can't just anybody add to that establishment. But of course, as a board, if you don't want to have that as a good election, you can take it out.
Okay.
But that was just something that they added.
Okay. So technically, they are not prohibited from doing what they want to do by what our current U D O, what is, what is in the U D O currently, what they are essentially trying to do is say, if we adopt this, these amendments to our U D O, we will prohibit anybody else from doing.
Well, actually, they're a non-conforming structure right now because it's not allowed in our downtown area.
What?
So any expansion, you can't increase the non-conformant.
So could, then maybe could you explain, explain that a little bit?
So if a, if a establishment is not allowed to increase to that use, you're increasing the non-conformant.
So what, how are they non-conforming currently?
Because they're not allowed in downtown areas.
I thought it said that they were.
That's what got all this started.
Okay.
Really what got all of this started is they had submitted their plans to the city. The city in checking this table of permitted uses and zoning information requirements for A B C stores. We discovered it was a non-permitted use.
Oh, because what I, it said in the old zoning, so as a, so in the old zoning ordinance, they were allowed.
No.
That's what it says. The old zoning establishment.
How do U D O is, isn't it?
Okay. So that's where I was confused, was that it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me. And maybe because you said to, so under the current, they are, it is a non-permitted use, and that's why the expansion is an issue. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, and I apologize for taking up so much time. I was just wondering, why would we add standards if they can do it without them? Okay, thank you. Item, does anybody else, any, any questions about that? Okay, moving forward to item B, consider authorizing the city clerk to investigate the petition sufficiency for the non-contiguous annexation request on behalf of C A B L L C for seventy-six point two nine acres located off the Outer Loop and Landis Road, and calling for a public hearing to hear the citizen input on the rezoning request regarding of said property for the March Regular Board Meeting. Any questions on this item? Okay. Item C, consider funding for updating the comprehensive land use plan. And you know, we've discussed this in the planning committee meeting that, that John's group held. And we all recognize, we discussed it this weekend, that we need to do this. So a recommendation of approving sixty-five thousand for continuing the comprehensive plan process. Yes, sir.
I'd like to revise that a little bit. We would staff prefer recommending to this body that you allow for us to basically submit the R F P out there, put the R F P out there, and then when we have the proposals, we'll have a better idea of the price and come to you with the price instead of just a carte blanche number that we don't know.
Right.
We would prefer that methodology this evening and allow us to go forward with the R F P, a copy of which Cheryl and I have been working on and are prepared to provide this week.
Excellent. So.
That's good. We'll, we'll have that Tuesday, next Tuesday, right?
You will not have the price.
No, we'll, we'll have the R F.
Yeah, you have to give the R F P time, and those that choose to submit a proposal, the opportunity to submit.
Thanks, yeah.
So you're just gonna ask the board approval? And my question related to this anyway was going to be that, you know, can we, can we, when it comes back with respect to the money, can we still wait to do a budget amendment till we're closer to the end of the year? Because so often, you manage it that things coming under budget.
I think you can, as long as we're all in agreement that we need to go forward with a comprehensive land development plan.
I think we discussed that before. We need an R F P rather than an R Q, right?
Correct.
Excellent. Okay. So then moving forward to item D, consider authorizing the city manager and staff to finalize a task order with C D M Smith, and consider adopting a revised resolution in capital product, project ordinance that aligns with the new funding numbers. So this is with respect to the project at the wastewater treatment plant, which is mentioned down in the recommended action, and talks about the price increase, which of course, we're all familiar with, with the Carlike Regional Water Plant, increasing from approximately six million to approximately nine million. So do any of you have any questions at this time for the manager or Amy about this item?
I, one question.
Yes, sir.
So, um, we finalized this task order. Given that the, the fluctuation of the market, if there is any additional increase in cost, how are we protected from having to come back and ask for additional funds? This is more or less just a, please educate me kind of question.
Amy, you wanna take a stab at that one?
We are hopeful that we have reached out to enough of the vendors that are providing the large ticket items that we have accounted for that in our estimate. Of course, when the bids come in, we don't have to be so as low as bidder and what the prices are. But one of the reasons we're coming back now is in post that we don't have to do it again later. And we've added some contingency insurance that will hopefully cover us if there's some fluctuation.
Gotcha, understood. Thank you for the clarification.
Other questions? So I have two. One of them is for Amy. Could you consider adjusting the narrative at the top to reference that this is a wastewater treatment prep? Plant project or city? Okay, good. Just bring a little bit of that language up to the top. And Alan, with respect to a project price increase of nearly three million dollars, but of course, we hope it won't be that much. That's not insignificant.
Really not.
Um, so do we have to, you know, has there been a conversation with the L G C about this? What, what happens as far as that with respect to, you know, debt service load?
L G C review of the city of Oxford's current debt capacity is, we're still in the green, so to speak. For me, as your budget officer, if we look back five or six years ago when we were talking about one hundred million dollar infrastructure improvement initiative and all of the projects therein, and what we would have to do and the rate studies and agreements and information provided by Raff Tellus telling us where we would need to be with our rates and rate increases in order to sustain that. We are still within that. This may potentially push out another project within that one hundred million dollar improvement initiative. But we've not reached that a hundred million yet, even with this. So we're conscious of it. We're having some conversation again with Raff Tellus in preparation for doing our budgeting for this upcoming fiscal year. This information will be included in that, calculated in that, in an update in that information. So we believe we'll be okay, but what we're gonna have to do is be mindful of anything more. And how that comes in, and it may have to be supplanted with this project.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
The L G C, is that an approval or is that just conversation? Or do they have to give their stamp of approval?
Amy, they technically already have. They've reviewed this and know of the increase currently, correct?
I have had a conversation, exchanged several emails with the L G C regarding this project. It were, D W I have presented it to L G C with the original numbers. And I asked L G C to wait till they got revised numbers so that in the post, we will have to go to the L G C once. That they're aware that this is coming and, you know, who will have this probably on the agenda for L G C likely in March.
Well, I guess I was really asking, what is their degree of involvement in?
They have to approve.
Okay, approved. Okay.
They have to approve and ensure that we decide to go out and build it, you know, half a billion dollars, taking in the next.
They are an integral part of the process. They do a significant review of any of these projects that are in advance of a half a million dollars. They are a significant part of that process and have to approve anything like that from local governments in the state of North Carolina.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and just for the, for the record, and my colleagues, I have often said to Alan, I never questioned the money because I know how incredibly careful and frugal he is. But I also knew that this, this was a bigger change order that we've spoken about historically. So I just needed, for my own understanding, to understand that, that impact. Thank you. Okay. Then we go to the end, which is the consent agenda. And so I'm going to assume, no, no questions on that? Then means, colleagues, is there anything that you would like to add? And I will start. You know, I've got new folks on both ends, and I hate to do that to you. I'm sorry to start with Ron and say, Ron, is there anything that you would like to add?
Nothing.
Pat?
For consideration, I had three calls yesterday asking me, did Oxford have a shelter? Because there were people in the cold, living in abandoned houses or garages or, they're seeking shelter. And I know previously, until our police departments start closing in the afternoon, they used to could go in there and seek shelter. So just food for thought. We need shelter. Our population's gonna grow. Right now, all of us got homes to go to, but it doesn't take but one incident for all of us to be homeless. We need to be considering, sit, you know, if we pair up with the county or go to the county. Or however, we need to be thinking about providing shelter because there are some people out there. And we've had a, we've been fortunate that we've had a cold winter, and we haven't found anybody frozen, but.
But it's been cold.
It's, I was told yesterday afternoon, and I don't know the young man, but there's one young man that has been sleeping in his car in Graham Hospital parking lot because he has nowhere to go. You know, and I, I think we as a city and, and a county, we need something. We've gotta start, we've gotta look into doing something.
So in the meantime, because I brought it up a couple of weeks ago, actually, probably more than a month ago, and the managers reached out to the county to to find some information about resources, and there are some resources, but there are some people that are still not able to access them. Is there the potential to have a conversation if everything is locked up tight at the police station? And I'm not even sure many people took advantage of it, but at least there is heat in that lobby area.
It's somewhere to go.
To have a conversation with the interim chief and see if we can at least, you know, then it's a personal choice. You know, there's this warm area, not cozy, but it's warm, and you're not gonna get frozen rain on you. Is that a conversation that you could possibly have, Mr. Thornton?
Until we can, um, work on something further future. It's just food for thought, but it's something I feel the city of Oxford needs or the county, either however you wanna categorize it as a, we need it, we need it. It's a need.
I will have that conversation with the interim chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Excellent. Seth?
I have nothing at the time.
Okay. Kwan?
Yeah, just wanna say that the organizers, preparers for the retreat did an excellent job. And, you know, of all the retreats I've been involved in, I, I think it was one of the best that I've participated in. And just wanna give folks kudos on a good job. That includes the food and snacks.
A lovely add-on. Yes, thank you. That's it? Yes, sir. John?
I think Commissioner Bridges stole my thunder, but I was gonna say the same thing. I think it was a, it was a good weekend. Again, the staff did a marvelous job. I mean, I know Cindy worked hard, everybody worked hard. And I just wanna thank everybody that participated in it to make it a good retreat. That's all.
Absolutely. Teresa?
I'm not gonna have anything to say this time.
Okay, Brian?
Just echoing sentiments, it was a wonderful retreat, good learning experience. I found my wedding ring, so.
Whoa! Was it at home?
Surprisingly, it, it was. Apparently, I've lost a little bit of weight because it, it slipped off without me even realizing, so.
That's huge.
We'll take that as a good.
Doghouse.
Hey, I'm out of the doghouse.
What a blessing.
But it was a, it was a good retreat. I was, you took me impressed by all the department heads and their effort and the information they provided us. It was fantastic. And kudos to everyone who was involved. Just to reiterate Mayor Pro Tem's remarks in terms of, in terms of shelter. I wonder, again, partnering either with our friends at the county, since they have, since they have excess building space, and/or partnerships with American Red Cross or other organizations that might be able to help us distribute supplies in, in connection with any type of shelter we might be able to provide. But anything we can do. And I suppose I'll also leave with the question, do we have any information, which I'm sure we probably do not, in terms of what we believe to be the number of folks who might be housing insecure in the city of Oxford?
I really don't know. Hate to even venture a guess.
Gotcha.
This is a conversation that I have every year as the cold weather comes in, usually with Chief Cottrell. And, you know, the comment is sometimes the police know that the, his staff try to keep out, their eyes out. There is some effort. I mean, remember, two years ago, we discussed sleeping bags. And I remember saying sub-zero sleeping bags with the kind that come over your, you know, that they, they, they put some money, and some of it is their own personal money into buying some supplies to try to help out. And, and this year, my comment was, you should let us know what kind of money you need because I think a lot of us up here would be willing to donate on our own. So my, my instincts are to ask the manager if you would be willing to check in with Chief Cottrell and interim chief Ford and see if they, they can bring some numbers to the table that can answer.
Even if it's a
Commissioner Khan's.
A broad guesstimate. I mean, I know, I would expect them to go into an actual head count, but.
Basically, a guesstimate.
Yeah, between, between twenty-five and fifty or something, something like that is more than, more than adequate because that gives us something to give. If we're gonna go to American Red Cross or we're gonna go to other, 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 you know, the county or other potential partners, at least we can give them an idea of what we're looking at.
My.
I know at one point, the, prior to COVID, when we had the feeding program at, at my church, we would sort of get an idea because the Department of Social Service would call us. And, and I think, and, and that's one of the reasons I got the call because they, they were wanting to know, you know, what, what was the church doing? What, you know, are we still doing that? But because of COVID, you know, we're not. So I think that's why I got the calls, you know. And I didn't get an estimate. I know they just mentioned three. You know, they just brought up three. Whether, you know, it was more than that, I don't know, you know. And I really did feel bad having to say, well, right now, as a church member and as a commissioner, I don't know of any facilities right now. And, and I felt bad saying that because we need something, commissioner.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking to see if I had, it must be in my house, at my computer, because I had, had the stuff that Alan sent to us. Yes, sir.
I just have a question. Can any of the rescue funds or funds we get from the federal government as a result of the pandemic be used or something like that?
I don't know. I don't know that that one has even come up, to be quite honest with you. It is something I can submit to Cara Malanzie and see what she thinks.
Thank you. To dovetail on what Pat said, Brian, or I can be more formal and say Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, it's been my impression that our numbers are always under ten and hovering in the range of three to six. The last, a year ago, when I had the conversation with Chief Cottrell, he spoke about two people, that there were five, and two got housed. One found something at the Housing Authority, and I can't remember. One found something at the housing authority and I can't remember the other. But anyway, that, but I've also heard people say there are more than we know about. So, you know, maybe squatting in and being in the buildings and things like that, so that-
And that's what I'm aware of.
Is that the, that, that three to six might be people who are really out in the open and that there are others who are in untenable housing.
I would just hate for us to get up one morning and Alan has sent us an email saying that some homeless person perished in someone else's abandoned house or garage or what have you. It's just food for us to be digesting and thinking about.
Excellent. Thank you. And lastly, and then I'll go down to the manager, I just wanna reiterate, and I know I expressed myself on Saturday. I agree with all the positive comments about the retreat. There were just so many aspects about it that I thought were wonderful. And, you know, the department head reports are always great. And I know we kind of kept things at kind of a pretty rapid clip with respect to questions and time. But the consequence was every department head got heard equally. And sometimes what happens is the timing expands in the beginning and then it compresses at the end and board members are tired and the people at the very end. So, that it was, you know, for you to say, yes, it was fantastic and you learned a lot. Part of that is because we were all fresh and they did a great job. The reports were great. Yes, sir?
If we missed a section in our book, can we get it?
I forgot to print those and bring them. I will get them to you and Kwan.
So, with everybody else-
Was anybody else missing anything?
I was missing one, I can't remember.
Probably it worked.
It was one that had a bunch of the pictures of the planning of the new developments. I think it might have been.
Planning.
I think it was.
Okay.
If anybody else is missing a section, as you look through, just send us an email.
Right.
Yeah.
Definitely send that to you.
Those got put together rather quickly.
Read or die, I think we're gonna-
So, there was yours plus, so it was nine including Alan's?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
So, you might wanna just go through and check and maybe, because obviously, you might not know, especially Seth and Brian, what you're missing, if you don't notice it. Because I was watching the slides and I wasn't actually looking in my book. But go through and count up the nine and see who's you've got and then, you know, let Cindy know if you don't have nine.
Well, I just had the-
Well, just let me know.
I'll send you an email.
Yeah. Just send me an email.
Okay. Excellent. Alan, anything else you wanna bring up?
No, I'll just say thank you for your participation this weekend. It was good to have all board members there for all of the retreat. It's also good to have participation on Saturday morning by some of the county officials. Those conversations there that were had Saturday morning are conversations that need to continue. We need to do everything that we can to try to be more inclusive with those folks, including continuing or beginning a conversation about the needs of the homeless. I always like to add that, you know, social services is not in our cadre, it is in the counties. It's a pantheon of things that they do. And I had sent the email response back to the mayor after checking with the county about what they provide and was quite frankly, a bit disappointed in the response I got back from the county from the lack of what they actually provide, which is little to nothing in terms of homeless support through social services. It was all basically faith-based organizations. So, I would encourage you to have that conversation with the county. Be pressing that to see what they can do. They actually have the resources, the people that are trained and all of the above via social services to potentially hopefully handle that certainly better than my staff has the capability to do.
Okay. But Alan, in communities about our size though, what historically have you seen other communities provide? Or what are they able to do? I mean, what are you aware of that?
I have not seen many our size and smaller that actually have something that is operated by the city. It is typically more faith-based or county provided via social services or something along those lines or even Red Cross or something like that in terms of a real emergency-type need. Typically, in smaller communities, it's faith-based, you know, something like Hope House that's in your community or via the county through social services.
And I think because of COVID, it has put a new perspective on it, you know, a new light on it because again, like Penn Avenue and a lot of the other churches were doing prior to COVID. COVID shut it down, you know. Where Penn Avenue was feeding on Friday up to a hundred, hundred and fifty people, feeding it. We can't do it now, you know. So, it's made a different dynamic for the homeless and the less fortunate. And I think even though, I don't mind going to the county, you know, I don't mind it at all because it is a need. And they do have the monies and the facilities and places. It would behoove us as citizens, just caring citizens, to have somewhere. Because like I said, because all of us are gonna leave here tonight and go home, who say that we one day may not be the ones that are seeking shelter.
And I, I would add that I do wonder if, if there are kind of interim points of care in the sense that when I'm on the Board of Families Living Violence Free, and many years ago, we decided to open a shelter. And we ended up having to close it down because offering that care round the clock because it has to be staffed is extraordinarily expensive. So, you know, I've spent a fair amount of time looking on Pinterest for, you know, what are things that you can do for the homeless? And I just, there are all kinds of things. Some of them are, but that don't require staffing. And is there something creative that we can look at that just offers conditioned space? Meaning that there's, it's not as big an issue in the summertime, but, you know, to get out of a torrential rain or in the winter to get in the heat without staffing it, is there? I mean, I asked the chief one time, what if we got a utility building? And put it next to the fire department where we have land so that people could just get in? And then, he did not appreciate this suggestion. And so, I think, you know, but the idea of something that people are aware of that they can go to that doesn't have to be manned because manning something is-
Is expensive.
Incredibly, so I'm not saying I have the answers, but I just wonder if we need to look at it in different ways as well as speak to the county.
The county, I don't mind at all.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you for, along with everybody else, for the incredible work that you did to make Friday and Saturday happen. And I think, thank you for the inspired idea to invite the board for extended conversation and to this board for the willingness to adjust your, the schedule that we had to allow that because I think that was great. So, with that, Mr. Turner, anything? Okay. Then is there a motion?
Motion.
I think we got a motion from our two ladies. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned and thank you.
Thirty-five minutes.
Oh, and you won. That was what I wanted to say. Teresa?
So, um, yeah, so I just said, can you pull up what we approved and then we'll just go from there?
Yeah.
And if I'm wrong, we approved, I have no objection. The eighth of March would be coming really soon.
But I think that, and I had two people for that, neither one of them called February's or March's.
Well, I thought about it and I, I had written the date for the February meetings already in my thing. And usually, when I do that, I'm pulling from what you've given us. And then I realized, no, I must have done it right then and I put it down.
Yeah, I will definitely pull that, look at it. And if you'd like, we can re-